There's a rule, the people that get the problem around Fourth Street in Fremont like that, they get it three quarters of the year. See, we drained Maple Land at the fifth ward.
Sure.
I guess while we're waiting for Mark Sherman to get here, he's pretty familiar with what this is and why this is and what we're trying to accomplish, so I guess while we're waiting for him, if you could give a quick explanation to everybody else on the council, you know, where this came from, what we're trying to accomplish, and what the procedure is?
Initially, Baldwin Sherman brought the concept of nuisance abatement, sent a letter to the draft called "The City of Syracuse's Nuisance Abatement: You May or Do Not Take That For Machine Consulter." Basically, this is a proceeding to remedy certain nuisances. In the draft that we received from the City of Syracuse, it was specific to drug zoning, to drug abatement. This, in a discussion with the Legislative Committee, was expanded not only to include drug abatement, but also other nuisance offenses. Along that line, in discussion with Legislative Committee and law enforcement, we came up with designated nuisance offenses. Those offenses, if we want to include as nuisances, in order to abate them through this proceeding. Put together this chart, just to give you a brief overview of what these six pages in the draft speak about. In the first scenario, on the far-left side of the chart, you can have a drug arrest plus a conviction for some drug offense, plus a drug conviction or discovery of drugs on designated premises in order to bring us into this nuisance abatement proceeding. Or alternatively, three convictions for any of the designated nuisance offenses that we laid out here. Now, in the current form, the nuisance offenses pretty much include the whole spectrum of the penal law, everything from assault outside, sex offenses, burglary, arson, larceny, robbery, forgery, gambling, prostitution, obscenity, public disorder, offenses against children, and then looking to the City Code, alcohol beverages, the proposed notice ordinance. Again, we cover any controlled substances, marijuana, garbage and refuse code, property conservation code. It was a very all-inclusive list, however, when we took a step back and looked at it, it looks, it was like everybody's consensus that these are the kind of nuisances that we want to have included in the event we want to take an abate action. Now, hopefully, we'll never see prehabitation on a premises that we want to close down, however, to leave that out, I think would have been not in our best interest, so we included things that will probably never be used, but at least they're in there so that we're faced with a potential nuisance abatement scenario that things will happen in our ordinance to deal with. And it may look too positive to have controlled substances and marijuana under the nuisance offense section, we already have a drug abatement subsection. Reason is there. If we have the, if you look right in the middle of the chart, the three convictions of nuisance offenses could bring this about. You could potentially have two prostitution convictions in a certain location, but then your next offense ends up being drugs. If we didn't include drugs there, you're going to end up needing two or three drug acts to trigger this, or another prostitution which you might not have. So, the reason controlled substances and marijuana was included in the nuisance offense list was just in the event that scenario was triggered. And the timeframe that we're looking at for any of this is within a two-year period for the entire asset of nuisance abatement. Now, what happens if you have, say for instance, we've got one drug conviction, we discover drugs on the same premise, and we make another arrest? What happens? In the current draft, we would send a notice and orders typical of what code enforcement already sends out, telling the property owner, I believe we also will notice, basically going to notice everybody, going to notice the landlord, the mortgagee, mortgageor, anybody basically having interest on the property, give them an opportunity to be heard. I believe our current timeframe is 10 days where they can ask for a hearing and be able to dispute our allegations. And within those 10 days, if they elect to attend a hearing, there's provision here for the mayor to be able to appoint a hearing officer to be basically the independent arbiter of the issues. And from that point, the hearing officer can say, "I disagree with the chief, I don't believe this is a nuisance," or "I concur, and we're going to do certain things." Some of the certain things that could be done would be to enter into an agreement where the nuisance is going to be abated, for instance, within 30 days. It could be closure of the premises. Basically, I think, the way this is worded, it could be basically anything to abate the nuisance.
And this would go for any premise, being a commercial premise or a residential?
That is my question, yeah. Because we have a lot of taverns where we have typical offenses. And I noticed we have the property conservation code on there. Does that mean we can ask somebody to leave the city if they don't move their lawn in three years or a two-year period?
By having, well, first of all, answer to yours, premises is, we define it in here as being a building, place, or property where on the public nuisance is being included, or where the nuisance exists. So that would include a commercial or private. It would cover taverns, it would also cover privately owned dwelling, it could cover rental units as well.
What would be the remedy? Ask them to leave the city?
Initially, I think the remedy that we're going to be seeking is compliance to get rid of the nuisance.
Okay. I'm pretty familiar with this, too. And the intent here isn't to take Mrs. Jones who didn't cut her grass three times and kick her out of town. This is geared more towards, I think everybody in this room has a few houses in their ward that are always problems. And if...
Doesn't matter where they live there.
No way to do anything about it because they're tied up in this system, and they're tied up with this. This is a way, and I'm going to use one as an example, 102 South Third Street has consistently been a problem for a long, long time. And if there's nothing that we can do, we can always come back and say that over the course of two years, through housing court, or through the police department, there have been a list of different offenses. We can finally give him a notice saying that his house is determined to be a nuisance. And he's got 10 days to come in and prove otherwise, which at this point, I don't think he'd be able to do. And we would have the ability to, if the police chief so feels, we can shut him down and have everybody out of that house, and the house is vacant for, was it up to 12 months?
There's a, when or time period?
Yeah, up to 12 months.
Well, usually in that, we can put it back to where it was.
Right. If it's vacant for 12 months, the zoning will revert back to R1. I mean, that really gets drastic. But for problems that have gone around and around and around for several years in the code department, or for some other reason is still a consistent problem, where you have to give the guy a notice, you know, for something different, you know, every other week, now this is a way to finally get the landlord in his pocket. I mean, that's, without coming out and saying that that's what we're trying to do, that's really what we're trying to do.
I think to get right to the heart of what you're asking, if you have a situation where Mrs. Jones doesn't cut her grass three times within two years, we have to use sound discretion in using this. I see a large difference between uncut grass...
Oh, sure.
...in a period and...
There is.
...any of the drug problems or any criminal problems.
Sure.
And I think that we need to temper that. If we have two, you know, two drug convictions on the premises, and the third incident happens to be a property conservation matter, we may want to invoke nuisance abatement.
Well, discrepancy in a matter like that wouldn't be considered, what do you call it?
Selective?
Yeah. Like you're always telling me, we've got to hit the homeowners the same as we do the absentee landlords. You understand what I'm saying?
It would be my guess that over the course of time, it's not really the homeowners which have 10 acres in their front yard.
I've said that for a million years, but we always say we can't do selective in fourth ward, it's discriminatory. And I'm going to play the devil's advocate here for a minute. Let's say that we have an individual in a place for two years that's renting a place. And he has, he gets caught with possession of marijuana, maybe he's got an alcohol arrest. And then he gets caught again for alcohol or possession or some other thing, and he's not, you know, are we putting ourselves in a position where this person is in double jeopardy if he's already been punished, we're going to punish him again by throwing him out?
You mean if he's been punished in criminal court?
Right.
No, this is totally separate rights we're talking about.
Civil court.
Yeah, it'd be a civil running thing. One other thing, from my perspective, now when you get people in the court for codes violation, you're seeking compliance. But under this scenario, we might be seeking, for lack of a better way, to put in a notch in our belt to set them up for the next time, you know? In other words, if we get people to comply, we don't always seek a conviction. But if we have somebody come through that's, we think is a nuisance house that we may be down the road targeting as such, we may insist on a conviction at the first step so that that builds up to have three of them. So that's another way this will have to be looked at.
I think by virtue of just having this on the books is going to get you compliance where you may not have gotten it right off the bat.
Other cities have this?
Yes, there are. I did some surfing on a police network, there are other nuisance abatements statutes out there, largely drug abatement.
All right.
But as far, now, to answer your question about equality in enforcement, I agree that we would have to be equal in enforcement, however, if we're faced with two different premises, and the situation is that you've got two drug offenses on one, and then the third one comes up that's a drug offense, and we decide to do nuisance abatement, and we have a very similar thing happen over on another parcel, I think we pretty much have to act the same way. However, if we have three violations someplace else, and they all happen to be lawn mowing, or you didn't...
Code violations, yeah.
You didn't bring your trash receptacle in within 24 hours, I think that is different. I think we can look at that much...
As long as we can look at them differently, is what I'm saying.
Right. I think we have to look at the gravity of the offenses. The code violations are just that, they're just violations. A lot of the criminal stuff that I've put up here are at least misdemeanors, and in some cases felonies.
Well, can you mix and match them? Can you have two drug convictions and a code violation?
Yes, yes. On the, the scenario on the far-left deals strictly with drugs, which is subdivision A on your first page of the ordinance. In the middle, where you have three convictions of nuisance offenses, that can be a mix and match of anything you see over here. You could have a conviction for an assault, you could have a robbery that occurred on the premises, and you could also have a garbage and refuse code violation. And as long as you've got, you know, convictions for those three nuisance offenses within the two-year time period, and they are a result specifically to the premise, this is a premise specific, it's not necessarily an owner specific, it's, you're looking to abate the nuisance, not the property owner.
Well, if you were to abate the nuisance, would you somehow mandate that the person that lives there move? Would the property owner be able to rent the place again? Would the property owner...
I would say that depends.
You understand what I'm saying?
I understand, yeah, there's a, and that's kind of in, it's worded in here as far as actually how we would post property. First of all, we start with remedies and try to remedy the nuisance. Then we get into service of notice, issuance of orders, enforcement of orders.
Can a landlord tell a person, "Well, you've got a marijuana possession conviction, and even though you're paying your rent, you've got to leave." Is that legal? Will the judge throw him off of that?
If it happened at the residence, sure.
That they're renting?
Because it's an implicit covenant of any lease, whether it's oral or written, is that you...
So in other words, in other words, they've got to have a lease, because 95% of Fulton don't have a lease?
No, no, I just said it. Of any lease, oral or written.
Okay.
Which, if you don't have anything signed, if you're handing somebody money to live in their house, you have an oral lease, whether you know it or not. Implicit in that, by law, is a covenant that you're not going to commit any crimes on the property.
Okay.
If you commit crimes on the property, the landlord can evict you for that.
Okay.
Mark, the question is, in my mind, on the nuisance offense, we're looking at convictions, but on the other side, we're looking at just an arrest. Now, if you use just arrest criteria, and that arrest does not hold up, what, and we've already taken action, what's that going to do?
The way this is worded right now, and this may be something that we need to take a closer look at, my initial reaction when I looked at this was, you know, we're going to base an action strictly upon probable cause and not a conviction. However, the drug arrest here is within 10 days of the last... No, just an arrest, I believe. The arrest is basically the last thing that would trigger the drug abatement. For instance, you would already have two drug convictions, and then this next drug arrest, the third drug offense comes up. You've got two convictions, but then you have a third incident, which is just the arrest, still pending, that would invoke the nuisance abatement proceeding.
Okay, so the arrest would be the third offense?
The third one, right. And yes, it's an arrest, not a conviction, it's just kind of the impetus to, you know, you've already got two that have been convictions that are, you know, definite, and then the arrest...
Either a conviction, or if you have a conviction and a discovery on there, that would be, now, if that happened at the same time, would that be one thing or two?
That's one thing I think we're going to clean up in the writing here. We have intended it to be two separate distinct transactions. The way it's worded here right now, I think we've got to move a comma around someplace to make that show our intent. But the intent was basically three, three separate incidents, two of which there were convictions, and one arrest. Or alternatively, one conviction, discovery of drugs, basically a drug offense without anybody to arrest. For instance, the cops go in, and we find marijuana, cocaine, but there's nobody to arrest, but the equivalent charge would be criminal possession of a controlled substance whatever degree. We would be able to use that in place of a conviction.
Mark, let me ask you a question now. I can see how that would work with landlords, because you can kick a guy out and then rent to somebody else's mansion. Now, if a person owns a piece of property, what do you do with them if they don't? Let's say a person owns a home, and gets caught on three of these things, what do you do? Tell him he can't live in his house?
Closing is one of the remedies. Actually, closing is the ultimate remedy in this procedure.
Somebody got to move. You can actually do that?
If somebody's living in a house...
Somebody that's already been punished in a court of law, you can punish them twice?
Well, as I said, this is a different rights, I mean, that's his criminal rights, or his criminal, you know, this is...
Well, the reason I ask that, I'm always reading about these sex offenders and stuff, and when they get out of jail, you can't stop them from coming to your neighborhood next to a school. So how would you be able to tell somebody they had three marijuana convictions, they had to give up a house, they were paying a mortgage on? How could you do that?
Well, we would have to, if it's a challenge...
I think we need to know that.
Well, no, if it's a challenge, we have to justify that it's in the public interest to have such a law, and I think it's quite arguable to...
Would that be...
Don't they have laws, though, that if you go into someone such a building, and the property owner lives there, they can actually take the house? Isn't it?
What's that?
Isn't it a law that already exists right now?
I think he's talking forfeiture.
Okay, I...
Seizure of property.
Yeah, we have done that with some real estate vehicles and cash in the past for asset forfeiture, basically the criminal...
I mean, I've got a property in my ward right now that's, in my understanding, is vacant, because they had a drug arrest there, the owners on Lion Street. I don't have the exact number, right, the house number, but...
Okay, but your question is, now that it's vacant...
I think what Ron's getting at is, how about the homeowner? There are already laws right now that would go in and, basically, they could throw the owner out and take them, take the house.
Well, unless he got Carter's car over to park.
If you're talking asset forfeiture, there are basically federal and state laws that will allow us to seize the instrumentalities of crime, whether it be a vehicle, cash, which might be the proceeds of illicit activity, or real property that's used to conduct activity through. Initially, the way I was interpreting your question, I'm not sure if this is also what you were asking, is, once the drug dealer has left the apartment, are we still going to go after it? In my opinion, the nuisance has been abated by him moving, so that would cease any nuisance...
So actually, the nuisance has to occur on the property for you to actually leave the property?
The nuisance either has to occur on the property, or be approximate cause of activity on the property. And what I mean by that is, say you have the tavern, and whenever there's a nuisance being conducted on the premises, the manager or property owner is smart enough to say, "I've got to get this out of my property," and push it out onto the sidewalk, into the alley, onto the street.
I think that answers what I want to know. So if a guy goes down to one of the local bars and gets drunk, and beats half the patrons up and gets caught with some weed down there, it has nothing to do with his property?
It may.
Because it just didn't happen at his place?
Well, it may. We've, I'm trying to think where that definition is here. If you look on...
Do you understand what I'm saying, do you?
It has more to do with the bar than it does his property.
In that case, it'd be the bar. I don't, I think you're missing what he's saying.
Has more to do with the bar than it would, because the activity was taking, taking place at the bar, under his circum, you know, under what, his scenario.
Right, as long as the activity is approximate cause, approximate result of the activities occurring on the premises, then we would look to invoke this.
I think what Ron was saying is, if a guy goes down a bar and beats some people up, he's not going to lose his own house under this.
If he does it five times, he don't...
But if he does it eight times in that same bar, that bar...
So it would be all, as long as you don't do it hard.
And so, you know, with bars, there's a whole nother, whole nother realm of weaponry here, and that's the ABC license.
Well, I just want to make sure if you're going to do it, it applies to everybody, and it's not just selective on homeowners or landlords.
Could we also use this, you know, for example, if there is a bar where, there is a problem every Friday night, you know, and there's different people every Friday night, could we use this to shut down the bar?
I think we'd be looking at, as long as you could say that there's some responsibility, some culpability from the tavern itself for that activity.
The owner condones the activity, or...
If the owner condones it, if the owner...
Or doesn't discourage...
...permits it to occur, if they fail to report, you know, like a felony assault in progress, you know, that sort of thing, those are the types of things that we have used in the past to seek revocation of liquor permits from bars in the city already.
Actually, you could get rid of every bar in the city.
Use the same criteria again.
If they don't cooperate...
Because what happens is, one closes down, they go to another, you know? They don't stop drinking.
Anytime there's an arrest, don't you report it to ABC?
Generally, as long as there's something that shows there's...
That had to do with...
Something to do with the licensed premises, yeah.
So there's already that hook there against bars.
Mark, I have one question.
Yes.
And I know I served on that committee. It's been circling in my mind here. Could you see where a plea bargain in the courts could cast this aside in any way?
Yes. Whatever the conviction is, however you get to that conviction, where we say we need a drug conviction in this nuisance abatement law, we need a drug conviction. Where we say we need a conviction of a nuisance offense for the three convictions, they would actually have to be for one of the designated nuisance offenses. If we charge somebody three times with drugs, but each time they plead to something else that's not a nuisance offense, then this won't apply. However, because of the laundry list that we have under nuisance offenses, chances are, I would say fairly good, that some, they're going to end up pleading to something. If you have three robberies occur, and they plead them to a larceny, larceny is a designated nuisance offense. I'm just trying to think of other...
Public disorder is going to take your discount?
Yep.
Along those lines, Mark, what do you think the chances are of some kid standing in court in front of Judge Lennington saying, "Gee, I get it, I better plead this down to this because I know it'll be my second notch in the city's nuisance abatement ordinance"? That's generally not going to happen, is it?
I don't think so, I don't think so.
And I think where recognition has to come from would be probably the city attorney, saying, you know, is this something that we want to keep track of?
We're going to have to be attentive to what our problem areas are. Mr. Hawthorne, I know, is attentive to a lot of the code cases that come through. When we have special circumstances, you know, brewing, whether it's a problem tavern or a problem property, or, you know, something that may, that we may want to invoke nuisance abatement, then we all need to be talking. And we routinely are anyways on these problems.
How I think this is going to work is that, for instance, I've got a property right now in the fourth ward, if we had this, it'd be, it would be empty right now. There's six units in that place, constant problems. We've had drug problems there, we've got garbage problems there, we've got, you can drive up there right now, I guarantee you, there's trash out by the street, and there's garbage next to the house, I guarantee it. And I've been after the landlord and after him. The codes department, really, you can write them up until the cows come home, is not going to do anything. Has no impact whatsoever, the landlord carries no responsibility, doesn't care. I'd like to go pack the stuff up and dump it in his front yard myself, but, you know, what's it going to do at this point? I think with something like this, is, I think this is a way to, you know, cut it off, cut off the money. I'm trying to get the money supply here.
Are we going to be able to do that, Mark, both marks, with code violations?
It can be, it can be.
Yeah, it can be.
Again, I think we have to use sound discretion, though, in implementing this nuisance abatement. This is, this is not going to be cheap, either. I mean, this is going to be time-intensive, labor-intensive, it's going to require a lot from a lot of people.
See, one of the biggest problems I've seen since the code enforcement's got stricter on landlords, at least out of my area, when we come out with the new garbage rules, and, you know, one thing that's made it harder, we've changed them a lot of times, you know? Well, there's a turnover. So, part of it is education. Some people will move from the fifth ward into the sixth ward, or not so much, or maybe the first ward, or from Von into the sixth ward, and they'll be there three months, and then somebody else will move in. And every two or three months, you're knocking on that door saying, "Hey, you know, you can only put your garbage out Friday night."
It's interesting that you mention education, because...
You know, it's really tough.
One of the components that we've discussed, in fact, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, is, I would say, a pioneer in landlord training program, where they actually bring the landlords in and give them a curriculum, basically lessons...
That's what you've got to do, really.
And how to be a good landlord, how to screen clients, you know, potential tenants, and what your rights as a landlord are. And their program has been usually successful. I know Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Hawthorne and the Legislative Committee have been looking at that as well. And one of the things that Milwaukee does is very interesting, just as a side note, there are three banks in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, that will offer reduced loans to landlords for developing property, but the hook is, you have to have completed Milwaukee's landlord training program. Now, we may not be able to do that here, but there's certainly other ways that we could go...
Well, my feeling is, the only way you're ever going to knock it down to City of Fulton is have less landlords and more owner-occupied, because if you go down two blocks of Seneca Street, I've got six houses vacant right now, and they're going to be vacant. Nobody wants to buy them down there. Nobody wants to live where they have to live next to that. And many years ago, you could see some new developments in the, in the east end of the sixth ward, and...
How long have they been vacant?
Well, one's been vacant two, or three years, one's been vacant one year.
Don't we have an R1A now?
Yeah, yeah.
Why can't we get these...
No, no, you're right, but the size of the lot, there's one of them, 408 Seneca, I'll mention it, Dan knows about it. And there's five apartments there, and there's probably, the lot size would be big enough for one. There's no way anyone can turn that into a one-family home and make it profitable. It's got to be tore down at a large expense, and I'm not sure if that lot's big enough to even build a single family. But the thing of it is, there's so many rental properties, that what these people are doing, they used to be able to screen their tenants and get good tenants. Now, there's so much competition, they take what they can get to get their money.
And I think in those cases...
I could even talk to some of the police officers that have apartments, and they're telling me the same thing.
Yeah, in those cases...
You can't get the people that we live around.
This may be of some value.
Yeah.
Now, like in the Milwaukee case there, where they license their landlords, don't they tie any, like, money from social services into that program also? If they're going to collect, like, HUD money or social...
I believe there was...
They have to go through that program to even receive that kind of money, so you're really cut...
I believe there was a component for that.
You're really cutting the legs out from underneath these guys, so you're forcing them to jump through the hoops. If they want that money, they're going to have to act in a responsible way to get it, as simple as that. And this is the, this is the approach I think the city's got to take, is you go after it in a money aspect. You can't go, the code thing is not working. So if you hit these guys where it counts, and that's in a wallet, they'll start coming around. I'm talking about the landlords now. And that's what you want to do, you want to get these landlords to act responsible in the community. Right now, they don't care, they're getting money, they're happy. You can hit them with every code violation you've got in that book, and that will not touch them, they'll just laugh it off and collect their money. I had, you know, I had a guy over on Fourth Street, warrant for the guy's arrest, he still had tenants living in his building. That's not right. That's not right. Now they're, it's empty. Now the building is empty. Now he sits on an empty building, not collecting a thin dime, so something's, he's gonna have to do something.
Well, we did do a lot through code violations. We did take some really bad buildings that, I mean, we had three buildings on, on Third Street, they had like nineteen people in three buildings, nineteen families. And we had the same amount of arrests every Friday and Saturday night. And the code violations, and that was a way, it was a tool that we used to eventually eliminate the housing.
They live on Utica Street now?
I think there are a few tools out there.
Didn't even live on Utica Street now, but, hey, I'm happy.
I think there are a few tools out there. I mean, the property conservation code in and of itself, the credit statutes...
It does work in a lot of ways. In all forms, it works in a lot of ways.
Asset forfeiture, that's out there. I think this is just one more tool that would be at our disposal.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to try it if it, if it'll work, you know what I mean? At this point, we, we need to try everything we can.
And I frankly think that the biggest part of this law will be the deterrent factor.
I agree. I agree.
Once we use it once or twice, and I think the first couple times it's used, it will be with extreme caution, dotting the i's, crossing the t's, and where we're gonna make sure it's...
Yeah, because I'm looking at social problems, and I've got a lot of them over the years. When we take someone out of a house and they got four, five kids, it's tough. Because when you put children out in the street because you don't like the way the mother or father act, it's a tough situation. They have to go somewhere.
Well, I think when we get in those kind of situations, though, we're gonna be looking at, at situations that are truly public safety, that if we are gonna close premises where we are displacing a family, that we're gonna be looking at serious issues such as criminal issues, drug issues, fire safety issues.
Now, I would think at that point that the children wouldn't be with them, but I see it all too many times. And we've got, that 408 that Danny, I was just talking about, we moved a family out of there fourteen years ago.
Right.
I forgot the newspaper.
Yeah, we don't want to be moving families, but again, if there's cause, if there's cause to do it, though...
There was no gas, no lights, no water.
I got a question on that, okay? If that happens, if the city, what happens if the city incurs any costs by enacting this? Can we tack that onto the taxes of that property? Any costs that are incurred by us? Is that...
I don't see why not.
Well, what cost, I mean, Mark, I mean, like when...
Say it costs us money. Say we end up, somebody's, we gotta move somebody out of there. You gotta, say you got a four-unit apartment, and there was a drug arrest in there, enough to, you know, have the police department shut the property down. Now you've got three other tenants that have gotta be moved out. Usually, they'll be taken care of by whatever, if they're social service or whatever, or if they're just, they can independently move them.
Well, that's a good question. Are we gonna punch everybody, or just the ones that perpetrate the crime?
No, it'll be the entire building will be vacated.
I think, I think that depends.
Yeah, it does depend. But to answer your question, I mean, anytime, the police incur costs all the time when they make regular arrests, and they don't get reimbursed for those. I mean, if, if you wanted this set up so that every expense involved in shutting down the nuisance could be re, recovered against the property owner, it needs to be in the law right now.
And I think we started that. We, if I was to refer a case to the city attorney, I believe you were able to impose a $500 assessment as part of this. And I believe we also did say something about costs, but I don't think we'd be looking to recover necessarily man-hours. I think this is more administrative costs, maybe the cost of boarding something, which, again, I think those times will be few and far between. And I agree with Mr. Hawthorne. I think just by virtue of having this on the books that you're gonna, it'll be a deterrent.
Well, Mark just raised a good point. I didn't realize it, and I'm gonna ask you a question. What if you have a three-family apartment, and two families are models, citizen families, and the other guy's a deadbeat? Do you throw the other two out, though?
I would say that we're gonna abate the nuisance. And if that one problem family is that, is the, is the one that we remove, then so be it. However, if it was a situation where you've got some sort of very offensive property, you know, fire, fire violations, you may want to actually say, in the interest of public safety, everybody out...
The problem is, though, and again, I'll, I'll refer to the property in my ward, I've got a constant trash, garbage problem. Who are you gonna, who are you gonna pick on? You got six units there. And every one of them is gonna say, "I didn't do it."
Well, if that's the case, then you close the whole thing.
Yeah.
I mean, it depends on the situation.
Because nobody over there's fessing up to doing it. They just do it. And basically, the neighbors are tired of it. I'm tired of getting the calls. I want to see it empty. It's simple.
We had that problem back in the eighties. We shut the water off in an apartment building, and one person didn't pay and the other three did, and we got in a lot of trouble. Because if someone pays the water bill, you can't shut the water off. And if someone doesn't commit a crime, you can't throw them out because the neighbor does. We have to be careful, I think, on that.
I agree. We have to be very careful. Again, sound discretion. And just to read one quick section here as far as costs. Upon receiving a nuisance case from the chief, the corporation councils shall maintain a special proceeding to affix a civil penalty in the amount of $500, and to collect any costs and expenses incurred by the city of Fulton in commencing the proceeding, closing the premises, and relocating any occupants of the premises. So we do have some language in there at this point to...
What would we do in places like these villages? Like, I, I really hate to mention names, but I'm, well, and I, and I don't mean to men, to insinuate there's problems there. But like Anita Village, or Henry Village, or Powers Drive. Now, do we shut, shut down the whole development, or just the apartment because the person owns the same...
No, we, we talked about that. That really won't be...
It's gonna be nuisance-specific.
Yeah, the definition's...
So it'd be a specific apartment?
That it can neither be a specific apartment, or...
The whole complex.
Well, it, it would never be there, I don't think. But it could be an entire house if there are nuisances throughout, but, yeah, it can be done either way.
That's just an example. I don't mean that...
Yeah, we used, I think the example we talked about was probably Garden Apartments.
Okay, yeah, that'd be good.
It's not gonna be at our entrance.
Mark, find your court. Mark, find your court.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
I would think we take just a short recess before we start the meeting.
Yee-haw. Hi, Kim. How you doing?
I talked to you.
You didn't get the...
She said, "Get it." No, I had to run a copy of that. That's what I'm saying. I didn't get one. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a fancy one. You're, you're slaving on.
I was at Griffin's Greens Sunday, and there was a sign on the third hole that said, "Caution bees from an arrow pointing to the ground."
Come on.
I didn't get it. Scott, I asked Scott, and he says, "The only one that came up was one for Jack." So I don't have the backup for the last three things?
No.
They're just notations, right? Two of these are just notations. Well, I don't know where it went. Scott, did you see if Mark's out there?
Yeah, grab Mark.
Give him. It's gonna be a nice wake for Mark. I'm telling you. Mark, it's gonna be on for a public hearing, the first meeting in October. Please rise, pledge a flag, and remain standing for the invitation.
Would you leave the flag in the United States of America? If you really want to like, we're just one nation, under God, in the midst of all, we're gonna be just as for all.
Lord, bestow your graces and blessings upon us. Help us see through your eyes. Help us to hear through your ears. Help us to speak through your mouth. Bless the city and all the people that live in it. Amen.
Amen. I see. Quick call roll.
Mayor Stafford?
Here.
Alman Lincoln?
Here.
Alman Sahaski?
Here.
Alman Weston?
Here.
Alman Sherman?
Here.
Alman Thompson?
Here.
Alman Woodward?
Here.
Our president, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item one.
Resolve the common council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September 15th, 1998, be changed to Wednesday, September 16th, 1998, 7:00 PM, due to the September 15th, 1998 primary.
Do you hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. Next item.
Resolve that the clerk be authorized to direct it to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, September 16th, at 7:00 PM, in the common council chambers in the municipal building, relative to a proposed local law which would change the term of the mayor from two years to four years.
Before we vote on that, can we do that by a local law, or do we have to have a referendum?
We have to enact a local law during the month of September. Have a public hearing and enact a local law, and then it goes on the ballot at the general election in November as a referendum item.
Okay, and that would apply to a new mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea, but I just remember the last time we tried this, we'd have a referendum. Okay.
You will, you're also going to be getting a notice, we're sending letters out to all the, the former mayors to have a meeting and discuss this before the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll move that. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item carry. Next item.
Where's a meeting in the council held on July 21st, 1998, a proposed site plan was referred to the Fulton Planning Commission, submitted by Kim and Tim Doyle for their property located at 201 Academy Street, which would allow parking spaces in the city right away by allowing the Doyles to extend the blacktop from their property line to the sidewalk. Where's a meeting the Planning Commission held on August 10th? The Planning Commission recommended the council approve the modifications of the site plan for the Doyle property located at 201 Academy Street. Where's a meeting the common council held on August 18th? Council authorized clerk to address for public hearing for this meeting, relative to this proposed modification of the site plan for the Doyle property located at 201 Academy Street, Fulton New York. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Is there anyone present that would like to be heard on this? No one. Anyone from the council? No one stepping forward on this. I declare the public hearing closed. We need, we would need a motion now.
We need a motion to, to approve the site plan.
I will move that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's finally done, Tim.
Motion carry. Next item.
Where's a meeting in the Fulton Planning Commission held on August 10th? The Planning Commission recommended the council approval of the site plan submitted by Mr. Robert Flynn, administrator of Andrew Misha Nursing Home located at 450 South Fourth Street. Whereas the plans included proposed future parking spaces for parking in the city right away. Where's a meeting the council held on August 18th? Council authorized clerk to advertise for public hearing of this meeting on September 1st to consider the proposal. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Is there anyone present that would care to comment on this subject?
Your Honor, could I just say something? I got a couple people ask me about these because they remember the doctor deal. And I just want, well, I, I think it's fair to make people understand what was different about them. I know that, I know the Doyles are zoned differently, right?
Well, that's, yeah, the Doyles are zoned commercial.
Right.
The doctor was zoned residential.
Right.
I think the biggest difference is what the Doyles did is exactly what was suggested to the dentist, and that is buy the house next door, tear it down, and make it a parking lot.
No, I think it's correct.
They chose not to do that, the Doyles did. And where the parking lot is going to be is the house that they tore down. And I'm sure...
Also, they're not tearing up the sidewalk.
That's right.
Right.
And I'm, I'd be willing to bet, if I were a betting man, that if the dentist wanted to take the house down, and I'm sure we would strongly consider letting them pave up to the sidewalk on Broadway as well.
Yeah, but not, yeah, but not take the sidewalk.
But not take the sidewalk up.
No, no, I don't have a problem with that.
That's the biggest difference, is, is the Doyles are doing exactly what had been suggested that the dentist do.
Sure.
She chose not to do it, they did.
I just thought it seems how the question had been raised, that people should know the difference.
There are a lot of differences.
Yeah.
You know, that's one of them. The zoning is another. How informed the neighbors were is another. They did not remove the sidewalk. In fact, they're gonna fix the city sidewalk.
I've got a lot of compliments. Place looks a lot better than what it did.
Definitely.
A lot better, and it's a welcome addition to the city. And on the 450 South Fourth Street for the hospital, where is it?
That's for the Nurse Misha.
There's a no. What's that zone?
Uh, what is that zone? Was that, is that commercial?
Okay. R2.
That's an R2? And they're not, they're not proposing taking the sidewalk out. They're proposing between the road and the sidewalk. Is that the idea?
Yeah. They're actually moving laterally up and down where the existing parking lot...
To extend the existing parking lot, that's what it is. And that is...
I just think that we had so much controversy about the other one, that the public should understand the difference between the three. You understand what I mean? Because I don't want anyone coming back and saying, "Gee, why'd you do it for these people and not that one?"
Well, one of the, one of the things that both of these people...
That's important that they know.
Is they went to the Planning Commission ahead of time, not after the fact, and I think that...
I think all the zoning makes a difference, too, Your Honor.
Yes.
And the fact that they're not taking out a sidewalk.
Right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
Special note, I did call Altell on that, and, about that telephone pole that's in the middle of those two lots, or those two spots there at the end. And he's gonna call me back. I'm hoping tonight he'll leave a message. And I'll let you know on that.
Your Honor?
Mr. Doyle wanted to ask a question.
Yes.
I don't know if it's too late to ask, but the planning board wanted me to fix the sidewalks as well, when I blacktopped up to them. And after that big rain we had, the curb is broken away up, going up the hill a little bit, and there's, there's no curb there at all. While I'm fixing the sidewalk, do you think that I might have somebody look into replacing that curb, so the water has a channel to run down where the curb is gone? It ran right over down the sidewalk onto my property. I just don't want to see all that tur...
Yes, most of your property ended up in Second Street.
Yeah, a lot of it.
Yes, it does.
Along with both sidewalks.
And that, that was because of that curb being gone, it give the water a place to go up on. And I, I'd like to see that if I couldn't get that fixed while I'm fixing the, I think there's three sections of sidewalk that I'm gonna, and will do all, you know, have the whole area. I'll do the sidewalks if I couldn't get a little help with the curbing.
We'll, we'll look into that, see if we can't...
Okay, I appreciate that.
Do this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item.
Where's a meeting held by the common council hall, held on August 18th? The clerk was authorized to direct it to advertise for public hearing for this meeting, relative to proposed amendment to chapter 151 of the Fulton City Code titled Swimming Pools. Mayor Stafford will declare this hearing open.
Mr. Vaughn, would you just bring us up to date on what this is all about?
This is a part of the zoning ordinance has existed for some time. I've always believed this particular section is, is too critical. It deals with, in particular, swimming pools and placement and residential dwellings on corner properties. And in the, in the zoning ordinance, when, when you have a corner property, you have two required front yards. And according to the present zoning, there's a 25-foot setback from the street now. And then in addition to that, there was a 30-foot that you had to be into the required rear yard besides. And this is just too restrictive. Basically, what, what they done when they did that was say you can't have a swimming pool if you live on a corner. That's how restrictive it is. And I, I understand when it was done, and, and people were irate at that time, and, and, but I think it's time to face the reality that if we ever want to be able to allow people who live on a corner to have a swimming pool in the rear yard, we have to change that. And so now we're basically saying if it's in the rear or side yard by five feet, it's fine. And that's basically the...
This proposed amendment really makes the ordinance less restrictive than what it was?
That's correct. It's a less restrictive ordinance. It still doesn't allow it in the front yard, but it doesn't make them put it 30-foot back in the rear side yards, only five-foot. So I think it, it serves its, you know, it serves the purpose that we want. And it's gonna allow several people who have made application for swimming pools this year, the opportunity to have it in their backyard in their residential dwellings.
Does anyone in the council have any further questions?
This came up, this came up in the fourth ward over on Faye, Coroner Faye and Taylor. A guy was getting ready to put a pool, and they put a stop work on him because of this, because of this code, so now being rewritten, he'll be, he'll be allowed to have the swimming pool there.
And this has gone through the Legislative Committee?
Yeah.
I think it come up in a lot of places. I had a couple of them down the 6th ward too. The biggest thing, when that ordinance come up, I remember it was, the VNT law said that there was a radius on an intersection that had to be clear, you know? And then they got a little creative with the side and the rear yards and like that, and it ended up that way.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Do we hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas the welcome to Fulton signs at the entrance to our city continue to be attractive and functional, whereas the addition of signage recognizing Fulton as the home of Congressional Medal of Honor recipient Corporal Carlton W. Barrett. Therefore be resolved that it is the intention of this council to make these all-inclusive with no additional signage attached.
Alderman Weston, do you want to speak on this?
Sure. It was the intention of the committee that in order to make sure that in the future that there was an additional signage put on our Fulton Welcome View signs, that a resolution would be needed to make sure that that didn't occur. We've also talked about a, a sign board possibility for all of our signs that would go on one basic sign board. So, like your organizational signs would go on a, a much larger sign, but they would all be within a certain area, so.
So what this is going to do is not allow anything else to go on?
No additional signage on the, on the entrance signs.
On the entrance signs. Very good.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the Count, Common Council authorizes Forecon Incorporated to prepare specifications for commercial timber thinning for stand number seven at Grape Bear Farm. Said specifications to be returned to the council at a future meeting for the purpose of advertising for bids.
We have, prior, you have approved a resolution hiring Forecon to manage our forests. They now have come out and said that by timber thinning in the one stand, it's about 52 acres up there, we can realize probably about $20,000 to $25,000. And they're looking at doing it at a time of year when there will not be damage to the terrain, such as starting in the November timeframe.
A little shy of 2 to 3 million, isn't it?
Uh, yes, the 2 to 3 million must have been determined to be a lifetime profit from that stand.
Or all the trees.
There's, when we showed the forest to the 3 million, he just shook his head and said, there's no way that there's anything near this. We may end up with, within the next few years, coming up to around another $25,000 or something like that. But this thinning will, and this isn't going to be a complete cut, this is just going to be a thinning, so that it is good for the development of the smaller trees, and we'll be able to continue to do this on an ongoing basis.
How about North Bay, your honor? We can get that too?
He is going to look into North Bay also. Yes, to see if we can get out of there. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Being enacted by the Common Council as follows. Section 1, receives from sales of and consideration given or contracted to be given for purchases of clothing and footwear exempt from sales, from state sales and compensating use taxes pursuant to paragraph 30 of subdivision A of section 1115 of tax law shall also be exempt from sales and compensating use taxes imposed in this jurisdiction. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately and shall apply to sales made and uses occurring during the period commencing January 17th, 1999, and ending January 24th, 1999, although made or occurring under a prior contract.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas by memo dated August 11th, 1998, from Commissioner of Public Works Raymond Graham, the city clerk, which advised clerk of expenditures, the city funds, materials, labor, and equipment for trash removal on certain premises. Owners, Jody Marvin, 4-6 North, 4-6 North Forest Street. Owners address, 3 Sheridan Street. Amount is $100. Now therefore, be resolved that there is hereby levied against the premises described above special assessments as specified. Said assessment to be effective immediately, and amount of said special assessment plus interest at 24% per year should be added to the 1999 City of Fulton tax bills if not paid in full prior to December 15th, 1998. Accepting city-owned property, interest on said special assessment shall accrue effective as of dated this resolution.
I'll follow you, your honor.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that pursuant to Part 617 of the implementing regulations pertaining to Article 8 of the State Environmental Quality Review Act of the Environmental Conservation Law, the lead agency being the City of Fulton, New York, is determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment, that being construction of replacement wells on Waterworks property.
Somebody want to explain this?
John? You talked to John Florrick on this?
Yeah, what this is, is to go forward, looking at trying to get more water, water wells on our, just property. Initially, we were going to go down through the bottom of one of the wells. But what we did is go between a couple wells on our property and go through Grand Blue Hole. Now what this is, is going to allow us to go ahead and put the well around it to its end capacity. Florrick was saying, we're down 70 feet into gravel that was highly saturated with water. So it will allow us to increase the capacity of our wells.
And you got to do an environmental quality review to do it? Yeah. Just the procedure.
Yeah, this is just part of the procedure. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it, your honor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that a new amendment to the City of Fulton zoning ordinance 177-54, titled "Right-of-way Use," should be referred to the Planning Commission for the recommendation to be returned to this council at a future meeting.
This is, I made a copy of this and handed it out to everybody. This is kind of rough. There's going to be a Legislative Committee meeting tomorrow night, and after we try and firm it up a little bit tomorrow night, I want the Planning Commission to look at this at their next meeting, which is September 14th. I think if we don't refer it to them tonight, they're not going to look at it until October 12th, and really, nothing's going to get done until, practically speaking, December 1st.
Are we going to have this for the public to look at though?
Yeah.
Do we have that tonight, or just the council?
I just gave it to the council.
Okay.
I mean, it's very rough. I wrote it, so, and I'm not a lawyer.
This is going to look at some of the uses, like for signs and like?
Right. This is for, if you look at all the things that have happened with the Planning Commission between the Doyles, the dentist, Misha, every time something comes before the Planning Commission, they always look for guidelines. Even Mr. Hayden's sign, you know, right now, he can't put a sign on the right of way. You know, maybe it could be addressed with this. And there are, are several hoops that somebody has to jump through in order to even come to the council for a vote. And it's open enough so that the council can still have a lot of discretion whether or not they want to give permission or not. So, it's pretty rough what I put together, and I want the Legislative Committee to look at it tomorrow night, and I want the Planning Commission to look at it at their meeting this month, so that they can come back and we can hopefully have a public hearing, maybe the first of October.
Once, once this is all fine tuned, yes.
Right, because their, their meeting is on the 14th.
This is what the Planning Commission had asked for.
Right. And their meeting is on the 14th, so I thought on the 16th, we could advertise for the public hearing to be on October 1st.
But before the 16th, before we advertise, or when we advertise for the hearing, we'll have this available for the public.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Good idea.
I'd like to move that as well.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved clerk to advertise for public hearing to be held on Tuesday, excuse me, Wednesday, September 16th, 1998, in the Common Council chambers of Municipal Building relative to a proposed local law adding a new section to the Fulton City Code 45-10 entitled Regulations by Retail Bicycle Sellers.
All this is going to do, right now, the only people that are authorized to issue bicycle licenses is the police department. At least one of the local bicycle retailers has offered to do the bicycle registration at the time of sale, but we need to, to change the legislation to authorize this, so that's what this is about. Motion?
Did you change that to the 16th?
Yes.
16th.
I'll follow you, your honor.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
These are notations that the appointment of Carol Veschow on Sheridan Street to Zoning Board of Appeals to fill the expired term of Christine Patrick, effective August 29th, 1998, to expire August 28th, 2001, is entered into the minutes of this council meeting of September 1st as a matter of record. Next notation is that the reappointment of Rosemary Sullivan, 307 Worth Street, Zoning Board of Appeals, effective August 29th, 1998, to expire August 28th, 2001, is entered into the minutes of this council meeting of September 1st as a matter of record.
Thank you. Before we get into the discussion phase of the meeting, I want to just have all the aldermen, due to the flooding problems that we had with this last storm, just renewed the need for some changes, especially in our storm sewers throughout the city. What I need from each alderman is a list of problem areas in their respective wards, and be as specific as possible, if you can, so that we can go out and find out just how much this is going to cost to make the necessary repairs. Because we're probably, under the circumstances, going to have to bond at some time in the future to affect these necessary repairs. So any of, any of you that have received any problems, reports of problems, at specific addresses, or in specific areas, please get these written down and get them to me as soon as possible, so we can put a list together.
I gave a shortlist to Roger Parsons back in February, worked in the 4th ward, but I think that in my particular ward, that would have to be expanded slightly, not too much, but there are a couple of problem areas. One being up on Fay, another at corner of 6th and Division, and then there's some problems down on 1st Street, too.
Please, just put a, a report together on, on what we have to look at, so we can get some idea what the cost of these projects are going to be.
Does everybody have a map of the storm sewer drains? I, I suggest you should get that, only because it gives you some insight on the size of the drainage lines. You know, you might have, what, 4-6, 4-8 inch lines dumping into a basin that has a 6-inch line going out. That means you've got 400 square inches coming in, and 50 square inches going out. That is not a good thing to have.
That would be Wall Street.
Yes. All right. Does any of the members of the council have items to bring before the council?
When, when is the hospital going to come back? Are they supposed to be on the agenda for tonight?
That will be on the agenda for the meeting of 16th.
Okay.
I have received information that I will get out to each of the aldermen.
Thank you.
Yeah, your honor, I'm glad you mentioned the, the water problems. John Crook and I talked about it today, and he told me you were going to mention this. I am the chairman of the Water and Sewer Committee, and a couple things that I think we need to do. I know that John Lincoln has got some projects in his wards that have been hanging for like two or three years. Bob Weston's got some, some major problems over there. He did, I'm not sure how they're coming.
We're working on the one right now.
Yeah. And in the 6th ward, I had a fellow flood out, he's here tonight, George LeVey, sitting in the audience, that lives on Annett Street. And Annett Street, we never, we hardly ever get, you know, sellers flooded there, because usually goes down the hill. And that night, and by the way, your honor, George said he seen you over on Kuga Street about 1:00 in the morning.
It was a long night.
Yeah, I know it was.
I, I had him at 12:30, so I, he was on the move.
Well, I was out that night, too. But I was wondering if, if the council does put something together and gives it to the Water and Sewer Committee, if we could appropriate for some of the bigger projects, some money for BB&L to look at them. And some of them, I think, would have to be bonded, and some of them, we probably would even have to seek out outside funding for, because they're so, they'd be so expensive. Down the 6th ward, most of the time, like in Annett Street and the Kuga Street, we'll get a short time flood, but it clears. But down on North Forest Street, where 4th intersects with Fremont, that crook, that, that...
That was a severe problem down there.
Yeah, well, I was down there about 5:00 or 12:00, and there was about 3-foot water in there, and, and nothing south of that is going to drain until that goes out into the river. So I think eventually, there's going to have to be a pump station put there. Because we're still developing properties along Forest Street and like that, with the surface area that's getting macadamized, and we're getting roofs, and keep putting more water in there. We drain Maple Ave there, we drain...
That one culvert, thing down, that is definitely one of the, that we're looking to...
You know, we cleaned that last year. First time in 20 years we cleaned that, but that culvert, you have the culvert that comes down from the 5th ward and goes under Erie Street and goes right down the back of Menner's. And then you have the other one that comes down from the garage and mingles in it, that comes from Sharp's Pond and the marks on Maple Ave. And then you have another one that comes from Crow Hill, and it drains all of the Riverside Dairy Farmland, and, so what happens when that fills up down there, not, you could have 100-inch land, it's not going to go anywhere till that water's gone. And usually, this is a bad one. But about three years ago, we had one almost as bad, when they had to thaw in February.
Yes, we are, we are definitely going to need to, to get funding together to get engineering proposals.
But that one that was off the Nussel, they call it the Nussel Project, but it's the one on 1st Street, that pump station was about a $1.5 million, and that was some from the city, some from the county, and some from, I think the DEC, I don't know, Bob was on when they did that, but I can't remember. But we need to have the aldermen put that together. The other thing we need to do is take our crews, and we need to dedicate at least two weeks a year, and each ward, to clean catch basins, because we're doing them on a complaint basis, and there's some of them that just don't ever get done.
We, we need to put any maintenance schedule, yes.
Yeah.
Implement a maintenance.
I know it's hard, because I've been there, and I know that, that some guys will, you know, we get into projects like we are downtown like that, but I have some catch basins, I had a fellow call me, he's been flooded twice, and he's called down since April, and it's still not cleaned, and John and I talked about it today, and John said, Ryan, if it don't get cleaned, you tell me tonight. John, it didn't get cleaned.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and the guy called me tonight, and when I went down there, he was not that nice to me. But I'd kind of like to know him. You know, if we had a, if, if we, if we had a water main break there tonight, his cellar would flood, because there's no place for the water to go. Both of them are full right to the top. Also, there, there's a crossover from that storm sewer into the sanitary sewer, so when we have a situation like that in the other night, not only does he have rainwater, but he has raw sewage in his cellar, and it's not good. So we need to...
That is, that is one of the things that, that has to be changed. We have some areas, and unfortunately, we find out through these storms, that where the...
I've known about it for years, it's always been a matter of money, you know, and down there, as long as there's nothing, like, nothing to pump that away faster to relieve it from the natural drainage, then if you separate that from the sanitary now, you're just going to have more water there. It's going to take that much longer to go.
That's why, that's why we need some design engineers to come in and see what we've got. But we've got to get a list of our...
Yeah, I wish to ask the council to get it, get it to the Water and Sewer Committee as soon as you could, and then I'll get with John or the mayor, and we'll, we'll see if we need some engineering on some of it, and then we can plan it in the budget to see what we can do with it.
Definitely.
I do have pictures here from George LeVey's house, if the council wants to see him. I do have pictures here from George LeVey's house, if the council wants to see him. And George has, from what we can see, over $3,000 with the damage there, and, you know...
When's your next meeting, sir?
Well, I got it where the Roger gets back, he's on vacation right now, and we usually try to schedule him when we have the water grievances, about once every five weeks is when we have, I think we ought to have one soon, but I don't want to have one till the council gets...
I just want to know when your meeting is, so I know when to get you a list by.
Well, can you, would it take more than two weeks to put a?
Take more than five minutes.
List together?
No.
I mean, if we, if we can...
Wall Street.
But what I would say is ask, what you guys should try to do is try to find out where that water goes when it leaves Wall Street. Like Mark said, uh...
Goes into the storm sewer across the street.
Okay, but where's that going?
It goes into her garage.
My house. So what you're saying is I can put all the storm over in her garage, I haven't got to worry about a pump.
You're going to convert your garage to a pump?
What I mean is where's it go, Harley, so, you know, somewhere, I'm, I'm thinking half the fifth ward drains right down there in that creek, you know what I'm saying?
Probably possibly.
And, and I think if we seek funding on it, it would be a lot easier if we know how big a geographical area we were taking in, that's the point I'm giving.
The thing is though, how do you want to handle it? Do you want to, you know, this was five inches of rain too, you know, you could build it, dig a ditch however big, and is it still going to handle?
No, if we have five inches of rain, we're not going to handle it. I mean, there's going to be places that are going to flood, but places that have flooded in the past, this just brought it to our attention again, there are a number of places that have flooding just about every time we have a heavy thunderstorm.
That's right.
Those are the ones that we have to take care of.
North Fourth Street's one of them, down there by Loopie Electric and down in that way, that almost always flooded, floods, and when it floods, it doesn't just flood the homes, but I mean, it actually puts two or three foot of water in the road down there. So I mean, that's, that's a little much. That tells you that you're not getting rid of it as fast as you should be getting rid of it.
Right. Can some of these projects get started this year?
Well, John, I think we got to identify funding before we can do them.
Yeah, I, I think we're going to have to land up some funding before we...
But I don't see any reason why we can't next year, we're going to get into budget process pretty soon. Someone like what I am, I think you're going to have to look for outside funding. I don't think we could, I don't think the city could really afford to do that kind of project right off the bat.
Well, we have, we've already talked with the community development to look for, for funding to, to help us with this. And they said that hopefully there would be some available.
George, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Uh, no, I turned everything on my paperwork in the city.
City clerk, yeah.
See what their insurance is doing. Cash the letter that I have to go after the city.
Yeah, I have the letter there.
You know, I, I own the property for four years, never had any flooding. Two previous owners, they've never had any flooding, and one of the farmers, I have their grandfather owned the house, and there's never any flooding there. And it all came from Kuga and Seventh Street.
This was substantial, I've lived in my house for about 26 years now, and this was the first time that I ever had flooding of the amount that, that I did by any sense of imagination, and it does get very expensive.
We had three inches in three hours that night there, in addition to what we had earlier.
We talked about when we had the father, we've got three inch drain plus a snow mountain, and I still didn't have any, you know, didn't have any problem with that.
No, you didn't, but we flooded out down below, the same spots I was talking about, Ontario and Fifth.
It's always been, I correctly opened that air duct, it's always had problems. And he, he did work on that main probably six years ago, and he said, there's a problem. Well, the problem wasn't fixed.
Yeah, they used to have a problem that helps on Kuga and Seventh, I'm really sure.
That is something we definitely have to address.
They own the property, they went all the way to Kuga Street store, did some work on the storm on the exit, when they redid the street, and, you know, they did, you know, it's all problems. You know, now, I live on Anita Street, and I'm taking the road, the problem on my side of the street, or, you know, it's just, you know, I live in here full, I buy everything here in full, and they refer you in here, I'm, I just repair my house and sell my property.
Well, we don't want to have you do that. That's why you're going through the right, the right way doing it, going, putting a claim with the city's insurance, that's the way to do it.
We look at that storm drain too, Your Honor, because that filled that whole street and come this way, and, but like I told George, when that's full down below, if that line was 100 inches, it's not going to drain until that's gone, you know what I'm saying?
If one of the old neighbors, she's a neighbor of that, she has a storm drain from Fort Santos to Anita to Anita and Sixth Streets, it's walled on and walled in, it's quite crushed when we did the road.
I, I never heard that one, but it would be good to look at.
It's throughout the road, and it's walled with this water farm, it's walled at the end of quite a shot. You got a problem?
Where is that, George?
That's on between Sixth and Seventh on Anita?
Sixth and Anita Street, when they redid the road, they bought that equipment, and they broke water lines down from there and everything, and they broke the storm drain, it's walled and shot.
Okay, we'll look into that. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. I want to take this opportunity to commend our fire department, our water and sanitation departments. I was out with them the night of this storm, and they went above and beyond the call of duty to, to try to save as much property as they possibly could. Some of it, they couldn't, but we also had, they called Cody Fire Department to come in to stand by at our station, and they even sent some of the Cody trucks out to do some pumping, and, and they did it gladly, and to be able to help, and it was just, the effort was super, and they should be commended.
Very good response.
They did a very good job, Your Honor.
Does anyone else have any items to bring before the council? No one else?
Do we have any... Do you want to say anything, Bob?
I'd like to, to, down on the, 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 they did absolutely marvelous job. I had to go get my house, they were across the road, they were absolutely wonderful with us, and I'd like to take my home to my house at 5:00 o'clock in the morning, because my son said he's sleeping, I said, wait a moment, tell him to get his butt down here.
And after I had a cup of coffee, I was down there.
There in five minutes.
And that includes getting a cup of coffee.
Welcome to the crowd.
Yes, it, it was a very busy night.
Your Honor, would it behoove the mayor's office to send Cody a thank you letter on behalf of the city? That's probably a good idea.
Certainly do that, yes.
Do you know if Granby or Volney came in?
No, Cody, Granby and Volney had their own flooding problems that they were dealing with, Cody was the only one under mutual aid that could respond.
We drink all of it.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
I can inform everybody in ten minutes, we're going to march during the time of emergency.